This is a public hearing concerning the rezoning request by TMEG Incorporated for the former Stonebridge Golf Course property zoning classification A agricultural to SR2 one family residence. At this time, I will turn it over to the village attorney, Rob Motel, to explain to you how we are going to keep order during this public hearing. Rob?
Thank you, Mayor, I think. First of all, on behalf of the board and the mayor, thank you for being here. It's nice to see all the residents' participation in it. But because there is a large crowd tonight, we want to obviously have this public hearing, but there's just a few little ground rules that might help move it along. Obviously, anybody that would like to speak is welcome to speak. When you do so, would you come to the podium and state your name? You do not have to give your address by law, but if you wish to, you can, because your name will be in the minutes of this public hearing. If you can, please keep your comments or your remarks brief, maybe three or four minutes. We're not trying to stifle any type of comments, but because there's a lot of people here and we have the limited time, we would ask that you try and keep your remarks to three to four minutes. Please try not to get unruly. I know when people are talking about property and property values, that's something close to everybody's heart. But on the other hand, if it does get out of control, I have to say that we can't ask you to be removed from the meeting only in those instances. It's not over the subject matter would be the... it'd be the trying to keep order of the business. Please try not to be repetitive. Again, you're welcome to speak, but if two people or three people have spoken on the exact same issue, it would be nice if, you know, it isn't the record, we understand what your position would be, and that would afford more people the opportunity to speak tonight. And then, I have noticed a little bit in some of the other meetings, we tend in a large group to have a continuing dialogue with members from the podium to the people in the audience, I hate to say "audience," but in the public chairs and such. So try not to do that. Try not to scream out points to the person at the podium and the person at the podium. Try not to say, "Hey, who's all for me?" and that type of thing. So again, we try and conduct these meetings according to Robert's Rules of Order. Nobody really understands those, but we have the basics. So anyway. And please only speak one time if you would.
Thank you.
Okay. So having said that, is there a spokesperson for the group that would like to speak? Or anybody who would like to speak?
I would like to speak first if I can, but I'm not the spokesperson.
Did you get my email?
No, I didn't.
Really?
But that's okay. It could've went in my junk, and I got just...
I tried to be helpful, and this is how you teach me.
Order, order. I did tell you I was not going to speak tonight, so I do apologize for telling you that. But being what happened at the...
Name for the record.
Sorry. Marley and Cluett, I live at 104 Stonebridge Estates Court. If no one's familiar with that address, it is Don Osborne's old home. So at the community improvement meeting, the mayor was there, and it was brought to my attention that the map I gave you trustees at the caucus meeting has two errors in it. So I did not print you this again for... I didn't want to buy another ink cartridge. But there are two homes that I did mark as vacant lots, only two. And that is the only error I found when I went back through and rechecked everything again. There are still over ninety lots that are SR2 and seven that are SR1, and this is only off of Stonebridge Manor, Woodfield, Stonebridge Crossing, that are already zoned. I know it was said, "Well, you don't have a problem with those that are already zoned." I kind of feel there's not a lot I can do about or say about many of those. Just making the comment that there's an awful lot of spaces already ready to go. Do we know if the petitioner is here tonight?
I believe I saw him in the lobby.
Okay. I wanted to speak on his behalf if he wasn't going to speak.
I don't know if you really should speak on his behalf.
Okay, in his favor, let's say. Okay, so you guys...
Your position.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, so you guys have seen me in the last month at many of your meetings, and you know that, and maybe most of the public does not know, but I have presented a lot of issues that I feel that we've researched, that I personally don't think this is a good deal for me. The reason why I say I want to speak on behalf of the petitioner is I live in his house. I was told that he builds cheap homes. I don't have a cheap home. My home is not cheaply built. Don built a beautiful home in which he lived in and raised his children there. He loved it so much that he built almost the exact home in Glen Carbon. You can go by and look at it. I have no beef with him, as I would assume that maybe the majority of us, but that is an assumption, does not have against him personally. I even asked Don to sign our petition just because I wanted him to feel like the only reason why we had this petition was to request if the section 1561.174 of the Village Code really does make the trustees have two-thirds of a vote, which I know you're researching that. I don't know if that's the case. I do have more signatures to turn in like we said we would have. So I see him almost every day, and that's only because he is building two homes across from my home. I believe every dealing I've had with him, he is a good person who does build quality homes. I do not want to be the most expensive home on my block. I feel with the current conceptual plan, most homes being built will be far below the price that I paid Don Osborne four years ago. Uh, sorry, I don't usually write notes either, and I wrote notes tonight. I'm asking the trustees to please consider all legalese, Village Codes, and factual information that has been presented to you this past month. I also would like to ask everyone that is in attendance, as the attorney asks, to please be cordial. You are... Everyone has feelings. Don has feelings. We all have feelings. Just be very cordial in your comments, state facts, and present the board something that maybe they have not already heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have something to say? You don't need to raise your hand, just please go to the podium and wait your turn. Thank you.
I'm Deanie Owen, I live at 2624 Sandstone. I'd like to start out by reading a portion of the Illinois compiled statutes. This is from chapter 65 of the Illinois Municipal Code, Article 11, Division 13, and it goes into the purpose of zoning in the state of Illinois. "To the end that adequate light, pure air, and safety from fire and other dangers may be secured, that the taxable value of land and buildings throughout the municipality may be conserved, that congestion in the public streets may be lessened or avoided, that the hazards to persons and damage to property resulting from the accumulation or runoff of storm or floodwaters may be lessened or avoided, and that the public health, safety, comfort, morals, and welfare may otherwise be promoted, and to ensure and facilitate the preservation of sites, areas, and structures of historical, architectural, and aesthetic importance, the corporate authorities in each municipality have the following powers." It goes on to list twelve different powers. I could read them all, but I won't. I'd like to mention the one that says, it's in section five. "The municipality has the power to divide the entire municipality into districts of such number, shape, area, and of such different classes according to use of land in buildings, height and bulk of buildings, intensity of the use of the lot area, area of open spaces or other classification, as may be deemed suited to carry out the purposes of this Division 13." And it goes on to say, and please pay particular attention to this, "In all ordinances passed under the authority of this Division 13, due allowance shall be made for existing conditions, the conservation of property values, the direction of building development to the best advantage of the entire municipality, and the uses to which the property is devoted at the time of the enactment of such an ordinance." I personally believe that your vote should not be based on fear of litigation. It should be based on how best you can serve the whole community. Your vote should serve the public interest and not the interest of any one single person. But if you are concerned about litigation, the Illinois compiled statutes, the comprehensive plan of the city of Maryville, and your own code of ordinances should guide your decisions. The comprehensive plan was created and approved by the Planning Commission and this board. It shouldn't be changed simply because one person wants it changed because it doesn't serve them anymore. It served him fine when he wanted to run a golf course and sell houses for a premium. The generally accepted purpose of a comprehensive plan is to provide a factual and objective basis to support zoning decisions. Comprehensive plans can be and have been used by communities to defend their decisions if challenged in court. This property is currently zoned as agricultural. I believe it's been zoned that way the whole time it's been owned by the Osborne family. Therefore, there should have never been any expectation that it would be zoned otherwise. It was zoned this way when we all bought our houses. The majority of us would not have bought our houses if it were not for the open green space. Zoning laws exist to protect the citizens of a community, and rezoning should never be as easy as simply just filing a petition. It should be hard to get land rezoned, especially when it goes against the comprehensive plan. That is why the law specifies that a public hearing must be held, and that's also why the public may petition against the rezoning, making it harder by requiring more votes to pass it. These laws exist so that the city government can actually get input from the public and then actually take that public input into consideration. So I'm just here to ask you to take all of these facts into consideration when making your decision, and I'm asking you to listen to the citizens of Maryville and vote to deny the rezoning request. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Okay. Would anyone else wish to speak?
I forgot to take this to you, I'm sorry.
You guys are wise.
Yeah, he's in my mind.
It's extremely hard to hear anything out there. There's like a lot of people out there. I don't know if their microphones are on or...
They're probably not.
But we can't hear anything out there. So just let them know.
Okay.
There's room on the floor.
I'll try to...
Come sit on the floor. That's the best I can do.
My name's Steve Cummings, I live at 138 Stonebridge Manor Drive. If you used to golf and you want to know where that's at, it's right off the, what used to be the 18th tee. I don't really have any comments, but I have a question for you guys. I get the sense from the people here, from the folks that I've talked to, that maybe there's not a whole lot of trust, but let me say this. If this, the question I have is, if it's, you guys agree that the zoning goes to R2, what's to prevent Osborne, this company, instead of putting single families on these large tracts of land, like we were told, to say, "Ha ha, I have my zoning. I'm going to put as many single-family dwellings as I want to." Is this binding? If you agree down the road that, "Yeah, I, we do this. We accept it, and we're going to go to the R2 and vote again." Is it binding to have a single dwelling on these plots like we were all told? Or can you change it? "Yeah, well, I got my zoning." What do you guys think? Tell me. Tell us.
I can answer that. This is a rezoning hearing. This is not a subdivision hearing. That is something completely separate. If he wishes to do something different, all we're trying to determine today is whether it will stay agricultural or go to SR2 rezoning classification. Prior to any building, any construction, he must then go to the Planning Commission, if it is rezoned, to subdivide and present a plan to them to build on those.
Okay, so I'm hurtless.
Correct.
Correct you.
But it is a valid question, and prior to any of that, that would come to the Planning Commission, and those meetings are also open to the public. That is only if the rezoning were passed. Thank you for your comment. District.
Yeah, Steve Lawrence, 17, Stonebridge Crossing. Just one question. As this thing has developed, I know we tried, or is being tried to throw all the available land under the SR2 zoning, under the, I guess, under the thought that, well, that's what the current land or the current lots that are developed are zones SR2. But if you look at parcel four, and I, if you need more than that, virtually all the lots that border on that property are all more SR1 in that they're all well over 20,000 square foot. So even though I know, yes, they were only SR2 as zoning when I purchased it and built my house on it, the fact of the matter is, they're more in line with the SR1, I believe, zoning code. So I guess my thought, or my question, my comment would be, can we please reconsider just rezoning the whole golf course as SR2? Our preference would be to leave alone, but if that's not an option, can we at least look and make sure that the way we're zoning the property is consistent with the size of the lots that were developed and built on, you know, 15, 20 years ago?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Derek Keaton Cox, co-claim, Maryville. I don't live in Stonebridge. I've come to the meetings and kind of taken it all in and try to keep an open mind. So a lot of people might say, "I don't have a dog in this fight," but I feel that I do because these are my neighbors, and we all deserve a government that we feel works for all of us. I want to state that I am friends with some on this board. You've helped me and my group dissolve card, and I've supported all of you guys. So we, you know, when we dissolved card, we could finally get some tax money back, get some money back to Maryville Parks. I also want to mention that Mr. Osborne also helped financially with the purchase of some signs. I mention this because I believe that there are good people on each side. Mr. Osborne is a businessman. He wants to make the most money that he can on his land. I get that. But what I haven't seen yet is some deal-making from this board, or attempts to make all sides happy. I want to ask this board, has anybody spoken to MCT yet? They've been investing in bike trails in Madison County and seem to be in a pretty stable financial position. I spoke to a few board members today, actually, and I know that they're already planning on spending money on a bike trail that will run right by Stonebridge. I'm an elected official and one of your council township trustees. I'm also one of two Madison County board members on Buy State Development. A colleague and I put together a plan that Madison County Transit will be investing a million dollars to Buy State for Freightway. Madison County or MCT has never done this before, all right? All it took was a meeting and presenting them a plan. Would Osborne be willing to sell the land? If so, what's the price? Is there something that this village could do for Osborne in other areas that would benefit him and the village even more than this project? If all options have not been explored yet, I ask this board to table this. Try harder to figure out ways to make everyone happy. I feel that this is a government, I feel that the people here, that's what we really want. We just want the government that listens to our citizens. If you just go and vote and allow the rezoning without really looking deep into other alternatives, I feel like people like myself that don't even live in Stonebridge, but live in Maryville, should be nervous because this could happen to any of us. They've already suffered enough. I ask this board to table this and just see what you can come up with, so.
Anyone else like to speak?
My name is Amanda Veighley. I live at 2705 Fieldstone Drive. Over the past month, I have attended every village and committee meeting to represent and speak on behalf of the now more than 180 members of the Stonebridge Golf Course Concerned Homeowners Group. Tonight, they have graciously agreed to present any new evidence, and they've been doing an excellent job, and issues that they would like to bring before the board as individuals so that I can present on behalf of myself and myself only. First, I would like to correct a statement that I made in response to one of Mayor Craig Short's questions at last week's village caucus meeting. The email I referenced from Kevin Flogger to Kate Osborne on May 1st, 2019, reads as follows. "I had hoped that you would have presented and exhibit the night of the hearing and what the intentions were, but I understand the situation had quickly gotten out of hand. I had a copy of the preliminary plat pulled up to present at your request that night, but I did not feel it was my place to present it as the board was just addressing rezoning at the hearing. In revisiting Kevin's statement, I find it to be correct and valid. The civic responsibility to present any and all information of the proposed rezoning and potential development plans to the public on the evening of April 22nd was on TMEG Inc., Osborne Properties, and not the Village of Maryville. Second, Mayor Short mentioned at last week's meeting that I claim I have been a part of situations like this on both sides of the river. Since my work has come into question, I would like to clarify prior to my next point. I am a senior consultant for the public engagement and communications firm Vector Communications, and you can find my bio online with my 14 years of career experience across Missouri and Illinois. In that time, I worked on projects such as the nationally award-winning I-6440 Design Bill, on which I worked with MoDOT to plan the public meetings and design the newsletter distributed to thousands of residents to help them navigate the four-year period where a 10-mile stretch of that major interstate was closed for construction. In the past six years, I have led communications efforts for the Springfield Rail Improvement Project, part of the Illinois to Chicago High-Speed Rail, on which I assisted engineers and the city planners as they delayed a portion of that project so that the Illinois Historical Society and a professional archaeological crew could excavate a part of that land where the 1908 race riot occurred, and then petitioned the Federal Railroad Administration to mitigate that railroad alignment to preserve as much of the historic land as possible. I have facilitated focus groups for the City Arch River Project where we obtained feedback from residents and community leaders for all walks of life to learn what they would value in new arch grounds and museums, which I think turned out great if you haven't visited yet. I could stand here and extensively list the projects, including Buy State and MCT, so I'm very excited that someone spoke up for them today as well. The project in which I have helped lead public communications and public hearing efforts, but the point is this. In response to your comments, Mr. Mayor, no. I have never worked on a project where the developers or engineers responsible for a potential change did not actively engage with and readily discuss the proposed changes or compromises to those positions with the key stakeholders and affected citizens. Third, last week, the mayor brought to my attention that the likely reason the Osbournes did not present at the Planning Commission meeting on May 28th was because some of my statements at the previous village meetings had been, in my words, derogatory, speculative, and unnecessary. So to the Planning Commission, to the village board, to Don Osborne and to Kate Osborne, I am truly sorry for anything I have said that has caused offense. That said, my words are not a valid reason that TMEG Inc. and Osborne Properties have not been expected to present factual evidence to the public as to why the rezoning of the former golf course is important, sustainable, and valuable to the subdivision residents and the Village of Maryville at large. Furthermore, while I am happy to offer an apology to anyone that I have offended, Osborne and his company have offered no apology for making residents pay premiums to live on a golf course that no longer exists, or for selling homes to new residents with a commitment that the former golf course land would not be developed. Unlike myself and other village residents, their company has to date, that I know of, offered no active solutions as to how the current developed corridors affected by this potential rezoning could be improved to address some of the flooding, access, and pedestrian infrastructures, the issues that the residents have presented. From my experience, a good businessperson should be competent in their plans and willing to speak up of the requests they are making to a governing body. Lastly, it was also brought to my attention by several members of the village administration that there is a belief held by some that we as a group should have spoken out at the first public hearing on April 22nd, when comments were made by members of the public about Don Osborne and racism. Most of you don't know this, but I have been the lead consultant writing communications plans, including diversity and inclusion efforts for many organizations, such as the Alzheimer's Association of Eastern Missouri and the St. Louis County Library District, which is a reason I feel that for me as an individual, it's important to address this issue. It is not now or has it ever been appropriate for members of the white public to tell people of color that their experiences or perceptions of discrimination based on race are invalid. The responsibility to stand up for Osborne Company's policies regarding equitable practices, the subdivision codes for installing Cool, and his own character in a circumstances in question lay on Don Osborne and not the collective public. To close, and I am sorry if that's too close to home for people, but it matters a lot to me. To close, I apologize for any missteps that I have made as a private citizen co-leading my first grassroots effort. My fellow homeowners have been consistently thankful, supportive, gracious, and brave. I have and will continue to learn a lot, and I'm thankful to live in a country that provides the opportunity for this community involvement, which I know that the Village of Maryville values. Thank you.
My name is Jim Beck. I live at 34 Stonebridge Crossing Drive. My wife and I have lived there for four years. We bought in July 2015, shortly after the golf course closed. We moved here from Florida after 17 years where we lived on a golf course in St. Augustine, Florida. The reason that we bought the house was several things that went into it, but I think some of the most important are the community to us felt very similar to what we had in Florida. The golf course being closed was not a big deal. We thought the view was very enjoyable, be something that afforded us the privacy that we were looking for in a home. I say those things to relay a point. I have been watching this process, and I've been curious what you all must be thinking as everyone speaks and listening to the facts as they're presented. So that drove me to go to the village website and look at the code. And with that, I see you have a lot of responsibility, and so I want to thank each of you for your service to the community. In reading that, I think that a lot of the points that were made earlier from the Illinois Municipal site that she said, I'm not going to repeat those, but in the Village Code, one of the things that I saw in your responsibilities for zoning speaks to conserving the taxable value of the land. That's a concern of mine. And in addition to that, there's another sentence that says, "Development will not impede normal or orderly development, improvement of the surrounding property, and what is most important to us, nor impair the use, enjoyment, or value of the neighboring properties." So that's why I'm up here today. I just wanted to, you know, those are my concerns. And I didn't say it, but when we bought this property in Stonebridge, we saw the whole community. It looked like a place we wanted to invest and live, and I think that's a compliment to the Osbournes. They developed a nice property, and we're proud to live there. So there's no animosity between us, but these are our concerns. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Mark Stapleton. I live at 14 Stonebridge Crossing Drive. We've lived there for 18 years. Still remember the day when Donnie, Joe, and myself stood outside our house and as we began the process, we all sat there, and it was kind of a partnership. And so, obviously, I could stand up here and talk. People that know me know that I can talk much longer than what is necessary, so I've limited myself to words and tried to keep it short. So, Mayor, thank you for your service to our city and everything that you've done. Trustees, thank you for sitting in those chairs. I know it's a position tonight that none of us should take lightly, and your leadership is valued. And if I could say one thing to you, sometimes it's very easy to give someone what is their rights, but sometimes it's much more difficult to do the right thing. And so that's what we're looking for you tonight, from you, and hopefully you can generate that. My prepared remarks are this. Ladies and gentlemen, when most of us moved into Stonebridge Golf Neighborhood, we were moving with a good faith commitment to partnerships, a partnership with the Osbournes and the golf course, obviously paying a premium for our lots with increased restrictions, all in an attempt to keep our property values high while enjoying the unique beauty a course provides. And we moved with a partnership in mind with the Village of Maryville, putting down roots in a smaller, quieter community with huge upside potential for small business growth and public and neighborhood synergies. Not knowing if the village leaders have done any research or investigation, I don't know, perhaps you have, on potential alternative solutions, I'd like to offer possible alternatives as examples to consider. Organizations like the Trust for Public Land, which is a 501(c) nonprofit, offer more options. For example, the Trust for Public Land is a nonprofit organization with a strong track of record of successes. of record of successes. Since nineteen seventy-two, it has protected more than three point three million acres and completed more than fifty-four hundred park and conservation projects. The Trust for Public Land helps state and local governments design legislation that create new public funds for parks and land conservation. They've helped pass more than five hundred twenty-seven ballot measures and eighty-one percent success, creating sixty-eight billion dollars in voter-approved funding for parks, land conservation, and restoration. Moreover, there are opportunities that have been developed through public policy, such as the obvious federal funds, which groups like the Trust for Public Land could help the Village of Maryville develop avenues of approach. I'd also like to point out that our U.S. Congressman Rodney Davis in our district has his office right here in our village, and I'm friends with Rodney. I'll be more than happy to contact his office and explore opportunities that the federal government might be able to provide for us. I'll be more than willing to partner with each and every one of you and with the Osbournes to sit down if we could potentially just lay this aside for a while, call a timeout, just as my previous respected resident had suggested, and that we might have a chance to come together before this goes to a vote and before potential legal actions are taken. Let's explore all the opportunities. Clearly, conservation and green space are important issues of our day and will continue to become more important issues for the next generations. I think it's in all of our interests, concerned residents, Osbournes, and the Village of Maryville leadership, to think toward the future and the attractiveness of our community to future generations, and take a very important pause and consider all of our options before moving forward with a rezoning decision. Let's stay partnered in our efforts for the best of all of us and truly focused on our future. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? I think we've spoken enough. Would anybody from the board like to make any comments? Guess the information's out there, and we've heard enough of it, so I will make some comments. I want to thank everybody for coming in. I know this is a passionate issue, and it's not anything that we take lightly, and I appreciate your comments. That is what we are elected for, to represent the residents, and I think, as Ms. Owen said, to represent all of our residents. There has been a lot of information, a lot of things presented to the village, and it is my job, as well as the other trustees, to make sure that everything is done fairly and equally, and make sure that all of the information that is presented is accurate. So there's been some things said, and I want to clarify a few things while we're all sitting It has been brought to the attention that there are nearly one hundred lots out in Stonebridge that the Osbournes have already zoned as single-family residential, that they could still build on. And I believe someone even made a comment at one of our previous meetings that the village has paid for the infrastructure. Well, let me correct some things. The village does not build the roads. The developer builds the roads. They are built to the specifications at that particular time when they're building the The developer, things were done differently in the past. Building standards have changed. We are taking a much more scrutinizing approach to the inspections of some of the infrastructure items, because we are seeing the problems of the past come up. So when you tell us these things, we know. But as far as having those number of lots out there, there is no legal recourse for the village to force the Osbournes to build on those lots. They are not required to build a house that they cannot sell. They are not required to go on a lot that has not sold. There is no legal recourse, just so that everybody understands that. We also cannot deny building permits on other projects just because they have open lots available somewhere else. Okay? So I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that we're just letting them do this. Now, we have no legal recourse. That's the law. Another thing we've talked about, and Marlene, I appreciate your comments, a lot of people have talked about Osbournes doing shoddy work, and I appreciate the fact that you have not had that experience. But we hear complaints about the roads. Some of those roads out there in Stonebridge are twenty-years-old. These are twenty-year roads, and again, building standards change over time. This is just normal. The village repairs them, and it's not just Stonebridge, it's in every subdivision. The village is constantly addressing and updating our ordinances to address some of the issues from the past, and things like downspouts and construction standards washing out our roads. These problems are not exclusive to Osborne Developments. We have these same problems in Fox Mills, Amberly, Maryville Meadows, which is over on Dogwood Terrace, Sherwood Oaks, which is Forest Drive, Nottingham, Heinhurst. These are not exclusive to the Osbournes. This is just natural wear and tear, and again, building standards have changed over the years. So I don't want the Osbournes to have an unfair, or everybody to have an unfair opinion of the Osbournes because you live in an Osborne Development, because the problems that you may be having are not exclusive to you. Every community goes through this. Let's see, there was an issue of water supply. People are worried about our water supply, if the Osbournes are allowed to start building more houses. Let me just say that our water plant is rated at three million gallons per day. On an average day, we use one point two million gallons. On a high day, coming up whenever it quits raining and people start watering their grass, we do approach one point eight million gallons per day a few times a year during the summer. We have four wells down at our water plant. Last year, we operated on three. We had to take a well out of service because of age and drill a new well. And even though we were operating on three wells, we were able to supply water to the entire village. We were also able to supply water to Glen Carbon when they needed it in an emergency. We were able to supply water to Troy when they were working on their plant, and we were able to fill up all of their water tanks for their reserves, and we were doing that with our current water plant. So as far as an additional thirty-six or a hundred houses, we have the capacity for that. Are we always looking for new capacity? Yes, we have been very proactive in working on our water operations just for this situation. So I just want to put that out there, that everybody understands that that should not even be an issue here. There have been some mention of public safety and street concerns, concern to adding more houses on the former golf course, which would put an additional strain on our public safety resources in our streets. And then we also have the people saying, well, if they rezone the golf course, that's going to really hurt our streets and our public safety. So the concept plan, just so that you know, there is thirty-three, thirty-five, somebody probably knows it better than I do, parcels that it looks like they would propose to build on in the future. And you worry about public safety stuff, but then in the next sentence, can we make them build on these ninety to a hundred lots? It kind of invalidates the argument. So stop and think about the things that are being said, because things are being said going both ways. Sidewalks and green space have been a big issue, and we have heard all about what our village ordinances say. So let me just say that. Stonebridge Farms, the final plats were approved in ninety-five, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, and ninety-seven. The manors at Stonebridge, ninety-seven and two thousand. Our sidewalk ordinance was not even written until October of nineteen ninety-nine, so the sidewalks didn't even apply. It's not that the Osbournes were given variances. There was no variance to be given, because there was no ordinance. And same way with green space. Our green space ordinance was not written until two thousand and two. So there were no variances given. They were building according to the standards at that time. Now, I can, you'll wonder, well, why didn't they put in the sidewalks, and why don't they do green space after the fact? Well, they're not required to, first of all. Secondly, I would think that any members of our planning commission would sit up here and, as the development has progressed, and we have this part of the development that doesn't have sidewalks and another part of the development that buts to it, now we're going to force them to put sidewalks. It doesn't really match the development. But here's the overall and the overriding reality of it. When that property was annexed into the village, there was an annexation agreement between the Osbournes, I wrote this down, Donnie Joe Osborne, William and Doris Keller, and Armin Woods in nineteen ninety-seven, that set the zoning for all of that property as it was annexed into Maryville, and it also locked in the development of all of that property to the nineteen ninety-seven ordinances. It's a legal binding agreement that the sidewalk ordinances and the green space ordinances will not apply to the Stonebridge development, because of the way it was annexed in back in nineteen ninety-seven, before any of these ordinances were written. So if you think that the village and the Osbournes are doing something under the table, it's not. This was actually done through village ordinances back in nineteen ninety-seven and nineteen ninety-eight. So I wanted to clarify that. There has been mention of our twenty-twenty land use plan that was passed in two thousand and thirteen, and it shows the golf course as the only large parcel of green space on the western portion of Illinois, I believe is what Amanda had told us.
Western portion of Maryville.
Oh, I'm sorry, western portion of the village, is what I actually wrote down. The map shows the northwest corner of Pleasant Ridge Park is approximately three thousand five hundred feet from the southeast corner of parcel number three, which is the old hole number three at the golf course. Pleasant Ridge Park is still considered in western Maryville. It's less than two-thirds of a mile, air miles, from the golf course. Pleasant Ridge Park, at that time, was owned by card. Now it's owned by the village. Pleasant Ridge Park will always be a park, because OSLAB money was used to fund part of the development of Pleasant Ridge Park. So that's open space, land acquisition and development grant through the Department of Natural Resources. So there is a park on the western side of Maryville. Also, the land use map is our comprehensive plan, and according to village ordinance and under state statute, the map is advisory-only. Okay? The ordinance, if you want to look it up, it's one fifty-eight point oh one. The nineteen ninety-eight version of that same map showed all of Stonebridge as single-family residential. It didn't even show a golf course. It also showed the property of this Pleasant Ridge Park as single-family residential. We have park property over here off of the Dalibane for Michael Noga Park. It shows that as commercial. These plans are advisory, and they change periodically through town. That same map also shows Bauer Lane going out to Keebler Road, and it shows Keebler Road going all the way up into Glen Carbon. These are advisory. Yeah, it's for future use, and it gives us a guideline of what we would like to see in the future, but we also know that plans do change. So I just wanted to make mention of that. You don't believe me? Here's the nineteen ninety-eight land use map for the Village of Maryville. All the yellow is residential. There's also been an issue raised with storm drainage, and we've seen pictures. My, probably the most prominent picture is how water backs up when it goes from one larger pipe into a smaller pipe. Just so that you know, and then we've seen pictures of the golf course and all the water running down the golf course. The smaller pipe issue is what is referred to as dry retention. This is built to engineering standards. Those standards are set by the Illinois EPA. They are in charge of stormwater drainage standards, and these are checked by the engineers. The reason that there's a smaller pipe there is to slow down the velocity of the water, because under the state statute, water cannot exit a property faster than it comes in. So when we have a normal rainfall, the water will just go from one pipe to the other and out into the golf course. Under a heavy rain, which lord knows we've only had a couple of those this year, it will back it up so that that smaller pipe can slow it down, sending it out into the drainage system. That is how the system is designed. These are designed for the hundred-year rain standards, but it seems like we've had the hundred-year rain three times a year for the last ten years. I don't set those standards. That's set in Springfield by somebody in the EPA. The EPA standards are also enforced by a local agency. Our local agency is the Madison County Soil and Water Conservation District. So additionally, the subdivisions around the former golf course were designed to drain onto the golf course. That is the natural drainage. The golf course is actually part of the Cohopea Creek watershed, just so that you know, because if we have a torrential downpour and water starts running and flooding the golf course, they could close the golf course. That's the way it's designed. So that's kind of a moot issue. And just so that you know, according to the National Weather Service, as of May twenty-third of this year, we are sixteen and a half inches above average rainfall. And I know that sometimes we talk about, well, even during a short rain shower. Well, a short rain shower, we've had three of them already this year, where it has rained less than an hour, and we have had two inches of rain in less than an hour, just so that you know. These create problems. They create problems for everybody, because the system is not designed to handle that volume of water in that short of a period of time. But I wanted to make sure that these things were out there. I am not saying this because I am for or against the rezoning. I am stating this as a fact, because it is our job to protect the village interest in all of this. So the property is currently zoned as agricultural, and I know you've all heard all the horror stories about what's going to go out there, but let me just say that here's some of the things that agriculture can be used for. Obviously, crop, tree farming, dairy farming, livestock raising, animal and poultry breeding, single-family residence can be built on a parcel of agricultural property, living quarters for people employed in agricultural or related fields, golf courses, obviously, fishing lakes or clubs, gun clubs, carnival, circuses, and similar temporary transient amusement enterprises. So apparently, that was an issue at some point, because the ordinance specifically said that. Greenhouses, churches, schools, libraries, museums, art galleries, cemeteries, radio and TV towers, electrical and gas substations, there's a few more things in there. If it goes to SR two, here's what SR two can be used for: single-family dwellings, churches, electrical and gas substations, elementary and secondary schools. Much smaller lists. It has been queried, Amanda made a presentation to the village board last week, and one of the things that she asked right at the end was, why does the village need this rezoning to happen? Well, the village does not need the rezoning to happen. What the village needs is to guarantee due process for the property owners, all of the property owners. Okay? Not just you, but for the Osbournes too. This board is, it is our responsibility to take into account what has been presented, both for and against this issue. Ultimately, we've been elected to make the decisions that we feel are in the best interest of Maryville, all approximately eight thousand residents. Sometimes the decisions are easy, sometimes they're not. Sometimes the most popular decision is the wrong one. Sometimes the right decision is the least popular. These are all things that we consider. We do not take this decision lightly. And I know that you have been here, and we have been relatively quiet, but that doesn't mean that we're not listening. This board has to look at how our decision is going to affect your neighborhood today, tomorrow, next year, three to five years. We look at how this decision will affect our village in the next three to five years and then some. We've heard many concerns by you, the residents, of potential future problems, and those have to be considered, and we do listen. We also have to consider what the statutes and our ordinances allow, and if the property were to be rezoned, with the list I just read to you, here is one of the reasons why, if we choose to rezonate, why we would, because the village would have much greater control over how the property is used. Obviously, it's been raised that yes, the village would increase our tax base, we could possibly and potentially increase our population. This all has to be weighed in how it affects not just you, but the village as a whole. We have to look at the impact to your neighborhood and the impact to all of our neighborhoods. Having said that...
Can you clarify something that you stated?
I possibly can.
It was my understanding that you stated the golf course was designed to take water runoff from both the Stonebridge subdivision and other subdivision?
The neighborhood surrounding the Stonebridge Golf Course, the Stonebridge subdivision.
So if those areas on the golf course are developed, that would have to affect the flow of water for those houses not to be affected by water. So how would one reroute the water? So how would one reroute the water that it's designed to take or build houses where water is designed to flow?
Okay. And this is where the confusion begins, because this is a rezoning here. Something like that would be addressed through the planning commission if the rezoning were to occur and a subdivision plan is developed. The plans have to go to the engineers. They have to show a drainage plan within their plans as far as doing any building on there, just like the high, the new high school is putting in a new addition. They have drainage plans that have to come in and be approved. They are checked over with the engineer to make sure that they meet our ordinances and state statute. So that's the best answer I could give you is, yes, they would have to have a drainage plan to build onto the golf course, and it would have to accommodate the amount of water, and they do all of these studies. I'm not an engineer, that's why they get paid the big bucks, but they look at all of that. It's not something that if the rezoning were to take place, they come in tomorrow and get a building permit and just start putting up a house. It doesn't work that way, so. Yeah, that answered your question.
And how do you know? I'm sorry, I'm a little late to the game here, so. But how do you know when all of this is happening? Because a lot of this has happened before I ever knew about it. So if they rezone it and they start that, and I'm particularly with that young man that just talked, I'm very concerned about the drainage.
Sure.
For my property onto there. So how do you know when they start doing that?
We have engineering inspectors.
No, I understand that, but I mean, when the process starts, how does a homeowner know? I mean, if you're not on Facebook and you don't have, you know, the village has a little quarterly news letter maybe once a...
No, we don't. No, we don't. We discontinued that a long time ago.
But I'm just saying, I don't think I'm the only homeowner that didn't know about this.
There are public meetings. They are all posted on the village website, on our calendar, anything like that.
Okay, so that's what you're saying, you have to keep abreast of that.
Any designs like that go through the planning commission, which meets on a monthly basis unless there is nothing on their agenda.
Okay.
Okay?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for your comments. Here we're welcome, sir.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
I just wondered, then what did the planning commission recommend after that one meeting?
Okay, so the planning commission, just so that you know, I think there was a little bit of confusion in that. When they met last week? Yes, last week. No, it was last week, last Tuesday. May 28th, last Tuesday. A motion was made to deny the petition for rezoning. That motion was seconded, and it was voted upon. Three people voted for the motion, four people voted against the motion, so the motion to deny the rezoning failed. And at that point, the planning commission made no additional motions, and they adjourned. They made no recommendation to the village board. They have left it to the village board. Now, we have discussed in our caucus meeting that we are going to take this up. Our ordinances and statutes allow us to take this up without a recommendation because we feel that it is only fair to the petitioner and to you as concerned property owners that you are given an answer. So we will be taking this up during our regular scheduled board meeting.
Tonight?
Tonight, yes. After this meeting, in fact, in about six minutes. Okay? Trustee White.
I'd like to, again, thank everybody for coming out tonight. Everything that has been said has been taken to heart by all the trustees and the mayor. We look at all the facts that go into this, okay? We try to separate the emotion for a reason, because as the mayor said, we're representing all of Maryville. I want to piggyback up what the mayor just said. The easy thing to do would be, and I, and he made a point there, would be to table, to pump, to push, you know, keep the can down the road. I don't think, and the mayor and the trustees don't think that's in the best interest of Maryville as a whole, because there's no resolution at that point in time. Everybody's just going to be wondering what's going to happen, okay? So we have to take action tonight. That way, everybody can at least know what's going to happen going forward. Tableing it would be the easy way out, to be quite honest with you. But this board, we're going to be courageous. We are going to take action on it tonight. That way, everybody can understand what we're doing going forward. Thank you.
Mr. White, since you mentioned my name, I just wanted to say that I know what I'm saying, I didn't say kick the can down the road. I said explore all the options, and I was asking the board if they had contacted MCT yet, because I know that they're investing millions of dollars in our area and in the bike path, and if nobody's even contacted them, what would be the wrong, what would be the reason to contact, what would be wrong with contacting them?
I'm sure that all options, once a vote is finalized, can be looked at. At this point in time, though, the issue at hand was the rezoning. And so we have to put that matter to rest prior to doing anything else.
To speak to that point, could the mayor clarify? Sorry, someone back here had asked a clarification, and I was just wondering if you could clarify. You had said that the board has heard all of the issues, both for and against, so we were just wondering what the petitioner has presented as for the rezoning. Like, why is that beneficial other than what you listed as the say ordinances for what can go on SR2? You said you've heard sides both for and against, but we, I don't think most of us have heard a for, so if you have a for from the petitioner, we would really love to hear it because we very much do care, and if SR2 is better for the village, we'd like to know why.
Well, only what the petitioner presented at the initial public hearing, where he felt that this was the best use of the property, that it would mix in better with the neighborhood than any other option that they have come up with, and still allowed them to develop it and basically expand the subdivision. That was what the petitioner has said.
Thank you. Thank you for your clarification. Appreciate that.
All right. Yes, I think I'm going to finish, so unless there's any other comments, we will close this public hearing and we will, yes, all right.
I have a question.
Yes.
So I don't know if it's been addressed.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Okay. I don't know if it's been addressed, what the village would be doing to help with privacy and property values of the current residents. We're trying to sell our house, and everyone's asking what's going on, and that's a deciding factor for some people. So we were wondering what's being done.
Okay, I'll need your name for the record.
Would you name your name?
Okay. As far as what the village is doing...
What would be done to maintain our current property values and privacy? Because that is, because building behind our house where there is, where the golf course was, would significantly reduce...
We, the village, what we can do to maintain property value is we look at property use improvement, and we also try to provide adequate infrastructure and public safety and services. That's how we protect your property value. If you're asking me to say that I'm not going to let anybody build behind your house, I'm not going to say that. So I think that's what you're going for, and I know that even there's realtors that are still advertising property as golf course community property. The village has nothing to do with that, and we do not control the advertisements of the realtors. So I really don't have an answer for you on that, other than what we can legally do, which we do for all of our residents. Yes, ma'am?
I don't understand Mr. White when he says the best thing to do is to make a decision because you have been given different options. And even if you rezone it and now that's, I mean, why can't we look at options before you rezone? You have, I don't understand the urgency.
If I can clarify my comments. The petitioner filed all the proper paperwork for rezoning. Once that paperwork is filed properly, illegally, it is the responsibility of the board to take action on that petition that was filed. The same for Mr. Osborne is any other person in the village who files proper paperwork to have property rezoned. Therefore, it is our responsibility to take action on a properly filed petition for rezoning. That is a legal requirement.
And even, trustee White, can I make a comment?
Briefly. Respectfully. Appreciate your opinion, but this is exactly the point I was making, right? And I think, did I hear Donnie's back in the room? Is Donnie back here? Is the petitioner back in the building? I mean, my point that I was making was, why not table the issue and let's all partner together around the table and discuss the opportunity? Maybe there's an opportunity for an option that's never been explored, right? And that depends on the petitioner. So if Donnie and Joe would agree to sit down with all concerned parties, and we can explore other opportunities, because I'm sure they're losing money on the golf course, right? They want to turn this around and make money, but it's been sitting there for four years. So, I mean, I don't understand, I understand your sense of urgency the petitioner filed, but if Donnie and Joe would agree to sit down with everyone, we could explore other opportunities about how we can turn the golf course into something that maybe the village can buy, maybe we can all get together and construct something so they can be satisfied, the village of Maryville can be satisfied, and we can be satisfied, right? That's what's called a partnership.
The village is not interested in buying any part of the golf course. We have property already that we can't develop, so we are neither with government or... However, my meaning, sorry. However, any potential rezoning does not preclude you from still trying to work out an agreement. That can still go on. If this board chooses to rezone or not rezone, this is not the end of it. There are still potential uses that can be negotiated.
Only if they'll return our calls.
This is not the end of it, so, okay? Last comment, because we have a very full agenda, yes?
It's just a question. Lisa Fickers, I live on Lake Hurst, so we live on the lake. We have this beautiful woods view across the lake. Why we bought our house? Now, you've got those power lines running through there.
We don't have them, that somebody does.
Well, you know, you've got, but anyway, you put flats in there, logistically. I just don't even understand how, there's not easement.
There is. That is an easement, but somebody, the property would still be private. Somebody would have to own the property, but it's still a utility easement that runs through there, right? Just like right now, the Osbornes own that property, but the utility has an easement through there. Can they build underneath that? Well, that's part of the easement. They cannot build underneath, they cannot build within so many feet of that. That is actually part of the easement.
I was supposed to see how that's grown, then.
Right, and again, this is a rezoning, this is not a subdivision, so, okay. I think points have been made, and I thank everybody. Yes, ma'am? Apparently, the last comment didn't hear, so, last comment. Yes, ma'am?
When will we know your decision?
You will know tonight. As soon as we can adjourn this and start our board meeting, we will go on with our business, okay? So at this point, I will close this public hearing. I thank you all for coming in for participating.